Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday night, or Tuesday night, excuse me, September 6th. And welcome to everybody after the Labor Day. Tonight, we're in regular session. However, before we go into that regular session where we're reading ordinances, we will be having a transportation committee. And this will be chaired this evening by Councilmember Peter Kostas, who serves on the committee.
Thank you. And good evening. And I would love to, with the beginning of the transportation committee, I would like to, the first item up to speak about is a cyclocross race that will be happening on Saturday, October 1st, on Armitage Road, which is located on the western side of town. And we have the two primary race promoters here tonight, Dennis Robertson and John Bennett. If you would like to, please step up to the lectern.
Thank you, Commissioner. Councilman Kostas for the introduction, fellow council members, Mr. Mayor. We're promoting a cyclocross race on October 1st. For those folks that aren't familiar with cyclocross, it's a mixture of mountain bike racing and road racing on a closed course. It is a timed event, and there's several different divisions of the event. We have been invited to participate as one of six races in the Capital City Cross Series, which is a kind of Columbus-based series. And we're hoping to expand the cycling culture and racing here in Athens. And so, in order to do that, we've requested that a portion of Armitage Road be closed for us to, for the race to cross the road in two very small locations, as part of the race course is located on the opposite side of the road. So, that's what we're here for, and a request that hopefully, the council can accommodate us in helping us out with that.
So, my first question is, do you have, will you be needing some sort of assistance at those road closures?
Absolutely. We've had help from the mayor's office with, been in communication with Assistant Safety Director Lucas. And he's been keeping us up to date on what we need to do and what's required in order for us to maintain emergency access on that route. We will be providing, the section of the road that we will be crossing is approximately 300 feet in length. It is easily visible both directions for several hundred yards. We will be providing crossing folks with radios and safety vests to maintain any traffic. I don't know if you folks are aware or not, but there's only approximately five residences. It's a dead-end road past the area where we're going to be crossing the road. We're also going to provide an additional crossing person at the second railroad track crossing, which is probably a half or three-fourths of a mile from the section of the road that we're going to have, they'll have radio communications as well. And if there were to be an emergency on the road where emergency equipment, fire, police, sheriff would need to get through, we could easily stop the event, hold the bicyclists off the course where they cross the road, and let any emergency vehicles through. There would be, at no time would there be any kind of blockage on the road. The only thing that we have on the road surface itself is the actual bicyclists. So, were there to be an emergency, we could easily accommodate an emergency vehicle down the road, so.
And estimated numbers and time of closure?
The event, the first race starts at 10:30 a.m., so we would probably have the road closed approximately 15 minutes prior to that. So, 10:15 a.m. And the final race begins at 2:45 and lasts for 45 minutes. So, by the time we would conclude the final race, we would see it somewhere around 3:45, at four o'clock at the latest.
My final question, you know, is, I wonder about, since this is a for-profit venture, and we're asking for city resources, what kind of, and this, I'm going to open this up to the floor at this point, what kind of issues might come forth? I mean, if I decided to do an event with my business, what kind of help do I expect from the city? Okay, I'm sorry, Deb.
Basically, if you authorize the closure, they're allowed to flag. We've talked with the police chief, they have to have the reflective vests, as you said, communications. So, as far as city resources, unless you need any control measures to rent through environmental, public, engineering...
Not that we're aware of. We've actually spoken with all the residents that live beyond the area of the race, and actually, some of them are actually going to participate in the event, and all of them. We're also going to maintain, there's a secondary hard road that runs through the property that parallels Armitage Road, and we're going to maintain that open as well. And we've already let all the folks know on the other end of the road that they can easily use that as access in and out of their property, should they need to, as well. We have no problem, we have no problem letting them through if they needed to get through. But basically, the folks that we've contacted are very encouraged, the fact that we're doing the event, and some of them plan on participating. So, we don't anticipate having much traffic on the road at all, but we'll be prepared for whatever the contingency needs to be.
I would like to open, it's Member Pappy.
Just to clarify, so the actual race, sounds like it's going to be on private property?
Correct.
It's an area we call university estates, and there's a low piece, and then there's a high piece.
Absolutely.
So, are you up on the high piece? Is that the road you're talking about? No, you're in the low piece.
Right.
Okay.
What we have done, to make the race more palatable for the riders, they like to have a change in terrain, and that's what necessitated crossing the road, is that we've just used a very small portion of the hillside to give them some additional terrain.
I see.
Whereas, the field section is very flat.
Okay.
And so, that's the reason for crossing the road. And so, we were using just a very, very small portion of the road.
And the road race part of it, is that on our bike trail? Or where is that, you said that it's a mountain biking and a...
Well, the road race refers to actually the equipment.
Okay.
Yeah. Very rarely do they actually ride on the road.
Okay.
They take what is a road bicycle essentially, and put Nobby tires on it, and change some of the equipment on the bicycle.
Okay.
To accommodate it. It's mainly a grass-type course. And I would say 98% of our course is grass. The only, we actually will only be on Armitage Road for maybe 100 feet or so.
Okay. Where will the parking take place?
We have some accommodation for a little bit of the parking for the riders, that's actually on the hardtop road, and we worked that out with the mayor's office. And we actually had the Assistant Safety Director, Mr. Lucas, come out and take a look at the property to make sure that we don't have any impact on the wellhead area. He looked at it and basically discussed with us what we needed to do in order to make sure that we protect that. So, we're very vigilant in that regard, and can well, fall well within what his guidelines for us are in regards to doing that. And our plan, and with the mayor's suggestion, is that we're going to try and park as many folks as we can spectator-wise at the West State Street ballfields, since the bike path connects over to our area. And really encourage everybody to kind of get in the spirit of the event and cycle over to the, and we're going to provide plenty of bicycle parking at the event. So, our hope is, is that we can get the majority of the spectators to do that. We do have plenty of parking on the hard road surface, you know, to make sure that we mitigate any kind of wellhead issues. But we're going to try and encourage as many folks as we can to take advantage of...
Yeah, I'm kind of confused, because that is a narrow county, it's a city street, but it's pretty...
Well, no, no, the, there's a, not actually Armitage Road, there's an improved road that runs through the property.
Right.
And that's the area that we're going to use for the parking, not Armitage Road.
Okay. And I assume porta-potties will be there?
Absolutely, yes. Yeah.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Mayor Patterson?
There is a map, and you should have this map, what it's laid out. And it actually shows, what's highlighted on here are the two crossings over Armitage Road. And as Dennis was just describing, that there is that gravel road, the road that is to the west, basically, of where Armitage Road is, which is where a lot of the parking is going to be taking place on there.
Correct. The main parking there will be for the riders, because they have to have their equipment closed.
East, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, just east, I had flipped around. It would be east of Armitage Road, not west of Armitage Road, for the gravel road.
Yes.
And then, the residents that do live out at the end of Armitage Road are outside the city proper, but within Athens township. And I thank you for reaching out to them and letting them know. I believe the ordinance will read local access as part of this road closure, but that's for emergency access to get in or out of that parcel. And it is all on a single private property owner's property for the race itself, who has granted this to happen moving forward. And I really appreciate, again, you providing the flaggers, and the flaggers have each other in line of sight, but also have radio correspondence back and forth.
Right. We're happy to make sure that safety's the top concern here. Obviously, for the riders, as well as any of the folks that would need any kind of emergency assistance on the other end of the road. So, yeah.
Have you held an event here in Athens or Athens County before? Have you held an event here in Athens or Athens County before?
No, this is our first event, yeah. 50-year, born and raised in Athens, so I'm a, I'm a townie.
Okay.
Yeah. Our focus is to bring the unique culture of Athens to bicycle racing. Mr. Kostas can tell you, as an owner of a bicycle shop, we have a very, very unique area down here in regards to cycling, and it's gone untapped for a very long time. And our goal is to expose a lot of folks to the gem that is Athens County in regards, in the city of Athens, in regards to cycling, so.
And Member Pappy, just to add a little clarification, I know that in some of my discussions with Mr. Robertson, he has done motorcycle events?
I have, right, in the past, yeah, yeah.
You're not fresh to promote the world of promoting?
No, I'm not, no, I'm not fresh to the promoting business, yeah. I promoted motorcycle events in the late 90s, so I have some experience. Actually, that's where my experience came from. My son was actually a national champion off-road motorcycle racer, and when he decided to go to OU, the motorcycle racing professionally had to end, and he'd actually used bicycle training as a method to prepare for the motorcycle training, and the passion for bicycles lived on past the motorcycles, and so now we're heavily involved in the bicycle community, so.
I think, the date is, the date, is October 4th?
October 3rd.
Okay. October 1st. And how many are you expecting, you think?
Our hope is for around 200 riders, that's kind of the series average. But we will be one of the only actual permanent standalone cyclocross courses in the state that we've developed. Most of the cyclocross courses are kind of a stand-up, one-time situation, where they'll actually go to a national, or a state park, or a local park, and lay out a course and race it that day. And so, we're able to include maybe some features that the cyclists really would enjoy, because it's a permanent course, so.
So, the owner of the property is hoping that this will keep happening?
Yes, absolutely.
And you're hoping this keeps happening?
Yeah. He's a bicycle enthusiast as well, and loves the idea of what we're doing, so, yeah.
Mayor Patterson?
Since the date is October 1st, we'd likely have to suspend on the second reading of this, go through the first reading, and on the second, we would have to suspend in order to get this in. And just a point of clarification, or a question to you, is, would this site be the permit location of this event annually?
That's our hope. Obviously, the piece of property has more value than just a bicycle racing venue, so. But, yeah, our hope is, we develop this with the thought that, you know, it could be a long-term event, so.
So, permanence in Athens?
Yes, absolutely.
Location to be determined.
Maybe not necessarily that location, but our commitment is to this, is to the area in regards to promotion of cycling events, so. Our hope, we've done a lot of work. Our hope is that it continues, that it's well-received by the riders and the community, and that we get to continue forward moving, yeah.
And any additional questions? Okay. I would like to, let me first thank Mr. Robertson and Mr. Bennett for showing up today and providing all this input.
Well, we thank you so much for having us, and the special consideration that you're going to give us in regards to helping us with the event. So, thank you so much.
And then, I also, at this point, need to open it up to the audience, and see if there's any comments that anybody would like to put forth on this topic. I see none. So, we'll move on to our next, our next item. Is that correct? Thank you. So, the next, the next item in the transportation committee is, very quickly, just ODOT. ODOT, at this point, we, the city of Athens, needs to enter into an LPA state agreement, agreement for paving and repla, for, and paving replacement project on US 33, State Route 550, and State Route 13, and declaring an emergency. And I believe that Member Pappy has more on this?
Sure.
Item.
So, this is part of discussion, ongoing discussion we've had regarding the US 33 upgrades that will then also go into our upgrades of East State Street. And so, they are going to be doing pavement replacement, all the way from State Route 550, Columbus Road, all the way over the bridges, over the river, basically, those bridges. So, if you kind of, that's quite a lot, a large piece of pavement that ODOT's going to be working on. Some of that, of course, is in and out of the city limits, and they need this agreement in order to proceed. And of course, we would like to see them proceed with this, because this fits into the overall improvements and access to Athens. If some of you have driven down along Columbus Road as it goes under Route 33, you know the pavement there is in, is in poor condition as well, and that needs to be improved. Some of this also has to do with the exit ramps on East State. They're working on those exit and entrance ramps to improve. We know that they are going to widen some of those, and I believe that there's some slippage work, landside repair work that is also needed at the 33 exit there.
Any questions?
And so, at this, at this point, the state is responsible for 100% of the costs for the improvements. The city would be responsible for anything that the state doesn't deem as being necessary to the project? So, if there was anything that we needed to add to it, we couldn't request additional funding for it? Is that, is that correct, in my reading?
Well, part of the agreement also has to do with utilities. It's a right-of-way statement, and they deal with that as well. That's usually, ODOT handles all of that. So, that's part of the right-of-way cooperation statement and maintenance statement. So, it's pretty standard kind of contract that we enter into with ODOT.
Do we have any other questions? Mayor Patterson?
Not a question, but again, as Member Pappy was saying, anything above and beyond the scope of what ODOT, District 10, has agreed to do with this 2.28-mile stretch of 33, it would be on the city. They've got this pretty much scoped out, and it is going to include the off-ramps off of 33, the widening of those. And as Member Pappy just mentioned, some of it's going to be Columbus Road as well, and part of 13. So, there's, it's a big project.
Do we know the timeline? Have they mentioned timeline to us?
Yes, they indicated they wanted to let it in October, so I would again, also be requesting a suspension at second reading in order to get the legislation.
And then, when you say, is that prep for, to start in the spring, or are they going to be starting the work? When do we, when is, when are we expected as residents to know?
I will find out. I do not have that.
It's a pretty large project, so...
Right. And their fiscal, they need to get these projects in, and then their major queue system up there. I think you're actually going to see some pretty neat improvements down at Columbus Road and 550.
And what I was going to say is, they need to get it in for construction season 17, basically. So, I'm guessing warm weather, next year, we'll start seeing stuff happening, maybe?
Do we have any other questions? I can, I can open it up to the floor. Does anybody have any comments or questions? I believe then, that's, that will conclude this transportation committee meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to the regular session of council, and our first item of business will be to establish a quorum, and all the years of council are present tonight. The next item of business is disposition of minutes, and we have set from the regular session of council held on August 15th, 2016. So, if we can have a motion to approve the minutes, please.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval of the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. We'll now move on to communications, and I wanted to check with council members to see if they're, they have received communications from persons. Yes, Councilmember Kostas?
Yes, I did receive a communication today from, from a citizen who was, who wanted to provide some input about the EV charging stations that we were looking into at the community center. And I believe Member Pappy also received the same, same letter, and is a little bit more up to speed on electric vehicles than I am.
I don't know if we want to discuss this. I guess the first question is, again, we got the communication, I think Mayor Patterson did. I will make sure that we forward on to, because it was brought up in finance and personnel, so we will forward that on to Member Reisner. But I guess, just looking at those comments, I think that there are some well-out, well-laid-out points that we may want to discuss further, I don't know, at a committee meeting, next week possibly, or, I think he does have some pretty well-laid-out points, and we could discuss that at finance and personnel once Member Reisner reviews it.
I haven't seen the documents, so.
That sounds like a good plan, since we are in the communications stage of the meeting tonight, so we'll defer that then to the finance and personnel.
Yeah, I have no objection to discussing it in committee.
Okay. Thank you very much, council members. Any other communications from other council members? Yes, Member Cocker?
I would just share that while out and about in various community events, I have been asked by several people about the status of the pool, and wanting to know what's happening with the pool at this point.
And any other communications? We'll move on to communications and reports from other elected officials. Law Director Lysen?
No.
Mayor Patterson?
I too received the email inquiry about the EV charging stations. I think unfortunately, there's some misinformation that's gotten out there, but certainly, I will be addressing that email. The other thing that I have to communicate is that on September 8th, so this Thursday at 1:30, there is going to be a groundbreaking ceremony for the Athens Molden Machine, which will be taking place down on Campbell, at the Athens Molden Machine. So, there's some information going on that. And then, the other item is that Wednesday evening at 6:30 in Activity Room B, or Room B in the community center, is the Armory Market Study Report that's coming out, where RVC Architecture, as well as Leslie Schaller, who was the lead individual on the Ohio Historical Connection Grant, this is part of the grant, looking at what, how we could best utilize the armory moving forward. So, again, that's going to be this Wednesday evening at 6:30 in the community center, open to the public, obviously, for input, but also to hear the findings from the report itself. That's all I have.
Okay. We'll move on then to our ordinances for second reading. The first one being 99-16. An ordinance authorizing disposal of Ohio Rural Inter-City Buses, known as GO Bus, introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you, President Nisley. I don't believe, no, I don't think we need to suspend this.
Ordinance 116, then. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to redesignate Hocking Athens Perry Community Action Programs, known as HAPCAP, to administer Athens Public Transit and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you.
And I believe we do need to suspend this one.
I do need to suspend this. The deadline is September 16th. So, I move to suspend 100-16.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. For the delay of suspend. All those opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended, Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you. If you recall, we discussed this at our committee meeting, and then first reading. And this is a HAPCAP, or Athens, Hocking Athens Perry Community Action. We would like to see be the administrator for the Athens Public Transit, and it's just a renewal of the contract, basically.
So, we have a motion and a second for adoption of ordinance 116. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I didn't, I didn't move to adopt.
I'm sorry, we have a comment?
But I do move to adopt.
Okay, I move to adopt this, sorry. And a second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 116. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries. Ordinance 101-16 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to redesignate Hocking Athens Perry Community Action Programs, HAPCAP, as contract administrator for the Ohio Rural City Bus Program, GO Bus, and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you. I move to suspend 101-16.
Second.
So, this is part B to what we just discussed, and allowing the intercity bus program to be administered by, or redesignated.
Okay. And we're suspending again, because there's a 916...
Right.
...deadline. Okay, we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended.
I move to adopt 101-16.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to adopt 101-16. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 103-16 is an ordinance accepting the donation of approximately 14 acres off Longview Heights by the Rotary Club of Athens, dedicated for recreational use and commonly known as Camp Rotan. This is introduced by Councilmember Fong. Ordinance 106-16 is an ordinance authorizing disposal of the green glass windows at Arts West, and entering into an agreement with the Athens County Historical Society and Museum to retain a portion of the glass for the city to use as replacement panes, introduced by Councilmember Butler. We now have ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 107-16 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to execute a mutual aid agreement between the city of Athens and Ohio University for law enforcement assistance, and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, President Nisley. We were fortunate enough to have Chief Pyle present a couple of weeks ago for committee meeting and he clarified and offered some detail regarding this. This is an agreement, this mutual aid agreement has been in existence roughly over 30 years, if I remember correctly. We're guessing since the start date was in October date that it probably initiated, was initiated with the concerns regarding Halloween and an attempt to work collaboratively with both departments. Some of the changes to the MOU include changing the date to a June date, so from October until June 30th, to try to make it more calendar minded. Likewise, it was suggested to us that this mutual assistance pursuant to this agreement shall be provided without cost to the requesting party. That was a suggestion from the administration and considering how well we work together with the university and not keeping track of all the super minute details, but to be more collaborative with them this way and moving forward. The agreement lays out the city's responsibilities. It also lays out the university's responsibilities and then additionally what both parties will agree to, including contiguous borders and primary jurisdiction issues, how investigations will be held, priority use and command and control. So those are the details that are laid out here. Any other comments?
Councilmember Butler, I would question your interpretation of the agreement to start with. Based upon Chief Pyle's statements to us, it seems like the heart of this agreement, and I have no opposition, see nothing wrong with an agreement per se, but the change in the agreement is that the city is losing approximately $10,000 of reimbursement. And I know the chief had indicated that he thought that was appropriate somehow because of the university calls upon our police officers to help at basketball games or things like that. But when we're talking about Halloween, it's my understanding that the university recoups about $75,000 from their extra fees for dorms and for guests, whereas the city has, I don't believe any kind of recoupment that we get unless I'm wrong that the university actually pays us for Halloween. It seemed to me that the chief's suggestion was that this is a city problem, the Halloween thing, and the university is being generous by sending its officers to help us on the streets. And I would suggest that perhaps that's not quite the real situation. So what I'm pointing out is that I, I think that the chief had entered into an agreement that, again, the city would basically forgive $10,000 worth of reimbursement because police are supposed to cooperate with each other. And I think that the citizens need to know that that's what's happening. We're basically saying, okay, you, we don't need the $10,000. And I see no justification whatsoever for that. As far as for the emergency aspect of this, it's my understanding that the agreement would not take place until October 25th. And I think that this really deserves some sort of citizen input. I think we were chastised a while ago by some citizens who attended the meeting who indicated that perhaps council just labels things as emergencies to run them through without the input. And I think this is certainly something that should be discussed by the citizens, especially in lieu of the fact that we're asking for a tax increase from them in the very near future, right before this takes effect. So from my point of view, that, that $10,000 should be the equivalent of a donation to the city for the fact that the university is basically not imposing this upon us because it's a mutually imposed kind of situation, but the city has not the opportunity to recoup those costs as the university has. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Foll?
I think, one of the things that, I think what I got from Chief Pyle, one is the declaring an emergency at the end, right, of the ordinance reading, that does not mean that you, that we're not going to do three readings. It's the standard 30 days after the mayor signs it, it takes 30 days for it to be enacted.
I stand corrected there.
The second thing is, from what I understand, is that the university tends to give a lot more officer hours to the city than what we give to the university. And so it's kind of, he was talking about a rather large amount that the university has never charged the city for. And he was saying that's actually a really good deal for the city and that we're not really being out $10,000 that if the university started charging us for their man-hours, like at all the fests and stuff, that it would be a lot more expensive. And that's, that's what I got as the take home from Chief Pyle.
Just from my notes, from point of clarification, we have a 300 city hours go to, towards OU events, but 1,000 hours, person hours go from OU to the city. So I'm kind of corroborating that information Councilmember Foll was bearing. Yes, Mayor Patterson?
That's correct. There was, you know, 1,000 hours annually, and it's not just for Halloween. It would be for any, any level of mutual aid. And that could be anything. It could be natural disaster related mutual aid if that were needed. But regardless, what's being asked of us is, is the 300, you know, give or take, it's really per person hour what we're talking about is depending on the number of officers they may feel that they need under the mutual aid to come. So sure, it could be 10, but it's $50,000 if you run the same, you know, math on it in reverse, that we could be incurring with mutual aid if, if, if OU starts charging us for the use of their officers in terms of overtime or mutual aid.
Councilmember McGee?
If I might respond to that with a question, and again, I understand what's being said, but please understand my position. This is not, Halloween is not an exclusive city problem that should require the city to pay everybody. So when the chief says that the university has fewer hours than we have in this trade-off, I think that excludes the fact that Halloween and the fest seasons are really a situation that's caused by OU students that we have to deal with in the city of Athens. And for you to say that it's a fair trade, it's not. It's not the equivalent of a fair trade. And for them to say that the city should potentially be liable for many more hours because we've had to call in OU officers to police Halloween, for instance, to help us police Halloween, ignores the fact of what Halloween is and what the block parties are and what these fest parties are. I mean, it's to the university's benefit as well to make sure that the students are safe at Halloween. It's to the university's benefit for the name of Ohio University to not have the kind of situations explode on like Mill Street. So those officers should be there. They should be assisting us and should not be charging us. I understand that. But when it comes to saying that Ohio Univers, I'm sorry, Athens City Police Officers should then assist Ohio University at, I believe, ballgames and things like that, I don't see the, it's apples and oranges as far as I'm concerned. And, and in the past, again, the chief had indicated the university did pay up to $10,000, I believe. So that's what I'm really saying. Are we willing to just say, we'll give up this $10,000 because somebody wants to equate the two and call them both apples when they're not?
If I may, I mean, first of all, I was refraining from saying that I said anything about this being an equal trade. I never said that. What I did say is that this is at the heart and the essence of a mutual aid agreement to where we are making, you know, in terms of law enforcement, we're able to, between the police chief of Ohio University and the police chief of the city of Athens, to where in times of, of need, and trust me, during sports events, there is a time of need in the city of Athens as well, regardless of whose property it sits on, is that it's the two police forces working together and the option, or the, the suggestion to not start, you know, having to, to collect fi, you know, revenue from either or, you know, if you think of Halloween, I'm, I'm just going to use Halloween, but that's one event.
Sure.
You know, when I look at the impact of a lot of other events, that's, you know, way more than I see with Halloween. But with Halloween, you know, do we start now paying the State Highway Patrol for their aid on that, the Sheriff's Office for aid on that, the city of Lancaster for coming in and providing mutual aid, all the different mountings from across the state? And that's not the, the case with that either, other than some expenses that we do end up incurring. But, you know, we're talking, again, at the end of the day, we're talking about a mutual aid agreement between the university and the city, which has been, you know, incalculable in terms of, of savings by having these two police departments work well together. And, you know, at this point in time, at no cost being incurred back and forth where people are, are moving money around.
If I could clarify, and I feel like I need to.
Your comments and then anybody other, other council members who want to comment also.
Previously, the arrangement was through the FOP. So that was essentially a high university hiring the individual officers through the, so there was, that income was not coming to the city. This was, I, I'm, I feel like working on Saturday and I'm not scheduled to work at APD or, yeah, so I can go work that. So high university no longer can sustain that model based on an audit of some kind. So then the offer came back about billing, us paying for officers and then recuperating their time. There was a brief discussion with the auditor's office, not saying they can't do it, they were open to doing it, but it's kind of creating. And as the chief went into it a little bit further, he said, look at how much they're providing. And that's why he came to us and said, would you consider this? That's, this is essentially the only change in this document that has been over 26 years that it's been in place. When you talk about Halloween, I'm with you, that it is a city sanctioned event. You close a street, you, you know, you're going through all those ordinances, even though we know who the majority of the revelers are in addition to those other multi-house parties on certain streets. And I feel like the university has indeed stepped up their assistance through those fest season and what occurs through Halloween as well. But I guess I did, just want to make a point of clarification. It wasn't that like we were receiving $10,000 a year in the past for APD officers working those sporting events, that officers themselves were receiving that through the Fraternal Order of Police mechanism. Does that make any sense?
Can I ask a question from that?
One question to clarify that, then we need to move on to other council members.
Who would pay them now? That's my question. Under this agreement, who would pay the officers?
I'm sorry?
Who would pay the officers if this agreement is adopted in the current?
They would be on our payroll, indeed.
So the city would pay them?
Yes.
Thank you.
So I, yes.
Thank you.
Be absorbing that cost.
Additional comments or questions from other council members? Yes, Councilmember Reisner?
That brings to mind if the city then pays those officers for their time, I'm assuming they're off-duty officers that'll be called in at overtime?
All of these, if you're able to read into the detail, are at the discretion of whichever chief, jurisdictional chief. For example, they could say, we're having this big home game in late October, and the police chief may be able to say, I don't have the people, nobody, you know, you're not available to sign up for it. So that, that's always been the place and vice versa.
Okay.
So then they would then seek other outside agencies.
I see.
To come and assist them.
So to clarify, there still is money being exchanged?
There is?
No.
We would be paying for our officers if they're working a sporting event. And that isn't a cost that has not traditionally been assigned, that's been done through the Fraternal Order of Police.
Do we, do you have some other additional information, Deputy Auditor Kreider? If you would come up to the podium, please. Thank you.
Because I don't know the, the total historical sequence of events. I do know that through the auditor's office, we pay Athens Police Officers for Halloween. We also pay horsemanate officers from other places. There are also officers who come and aren't paid through a mutual aid agreement. So the agreement with FOP, I don't know if it's been in existence and then has dropped by the wayside. Those details, I would have to find out more. Just to muddy the waters.
And I don't know that there is, I don't know that agreement with the FOP and that, that might be all within the Fraternal Order of Police, but previously, if they were working athletic events, they, they had signed up and were paid in some measure through that. OU is no longer able to do that.
Yes, Councilmember Butler?
Thank you. I'll just briefly add that this is, in my understanding, the same MOU that we've had in place for a number of years that has been working very well, other than the acknowledgement now that we will not request money from the university when they are volunteering or they are assisting us in our aid agreement. That's my understanding.
Clearly, it used to just focus in on emergency and now it's incorporating major events, which I believe our police chief would contend are some of the multi-house parties on singularly named streets that didn't exist. Because 30 years ago, we didn't have like fests, you know.
I must confess, I have a question of my own. I'm not sure I totally understand. So in the past, money went to officers through the FOP.
Yep.
And now, the police chief, as I understood the presentation, said, we have a mutual aid agreement that's worked well. But in my understanding now, so there won't be this exchange and keeping track of 1,000 hours here, 300 hours there, back and forth the other ways, but we will assist. But when our officers are called in to a major university event, the city will pay our officers?
Yes.
Okay.
Overtime. I mean, or.
And it could be in some cases overtime if that was deemed necessary. Have we tracked how much potential additional expense?
I feel like the police chief did and provided that at that committee meeting. That's the 300 versus the 1,000 kind of.
Yeah, that's all I had written down.
If you're asking that, to track it forward, absolutely, we can do that.
Okay. And Councilmember Cottis?
Yes, I'm sorry. But, I mean, I feel like to get back to the root idea, it's just being a good neighbor. It sounds like the university has, has gifted us time and servicemen and just to be, to be, to work with the JPAC Committee. I think, I think Chief Pyle just believes that this is just the right thing to do.
Okay. Thank you for the comments. Yes, Councilmember Cottis?
Thank you, Council President. I would just add that I, I do agree that this is being neighborly and working together for, you know, the mutual benefit of our entire community. But I would also point out that it is an unequal relationship because we're the little neighbor in the room. Our population pales in comparison to the university population. You know, people talk about our, our city being a, a community of 25,000. We are not a city of 25,000 all the time. So remember that, you know, the city without the students is not the same amount of people. And we, we have seen that by the fact that our police reports have recently jumped right up through the roof upon the return of students. So it, it is an unequal relationship, but certainly I think we need to continue to work together.
Well, thanks for all the comments and, and questions. And yes, is this pertaining to this ordinance still?
It is.
Mayor Patterson, yes. Okay, one, one last comment.
Thank you. It's just, this is important for anyone who's viewing, is that there is a clause in here where it's, it's clear that if our officers, and it's not just for major sporting events, but the agreement is and what is stated in here, is that there's something that is of a much more urgent emergency matter, that they will leave said sporting event to go take care of that. So it's, again, worth mentioning that there is a level of priority when it comes to other things that could be happening in the city of Athens at the same time as a sporting event, or the APD officers would, would take care of that.
All right. Thank you very much. I think we'll move on to ordinance 108-16. This is an ordinance authorizing a contract with the Washington County Commissioners and declaring declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Butler.
Thank you. Thank you, President Nisley. Again, police-related issue. We did have Chief Pyle sharing with us the need and benefit of extra bed days or access to other jail facilities when the local one, Southeast Regional, Ohio Regional Jail, is full at capacity. And so this is an effort to make sure that we have a safe place to take and transport individuals that are in need of that particular type of housing. This authorizes the City Service Safety Director to enter into a one-year contract, and this will be with Washington County Commissioners, for the housing of prisoners in accordance with the contract attached. And in your packet, you do have the contract. It is a $60 per day per each person incarcerated in Washington County in their jail. And it is for just one year. I believe that's just about, covers the majority of it. Councilmember?
I just wondered, the law director has reviewed this agreement, and is, is everything up to speed?
Yes. I will be.
Thank you.
Move on to Ordinance 10916, an ordinance amending the 2016 appropriation ordinance, and this is introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. Let me just read you here what the amendment will do. Section 1, the 2016 appropriation ordinance, 12015, is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the following sums: $3,978.28 to Community Corrections Act Grant Fund; $235 TC 600 for a refund to the state; and, let's see, $500,000 to Medical Fund; $866 TC 300 to cover claims through the end of the year, increase the total appropriations by set amount. I believe we need to suspend this, is that correct?
By the end of the month. So we could suspend on the second reading.
Second reading then, so we'll keep things on schedule then.
Thank you.
So no need for suspension for this. So that's essentially it, is need to pay some bills and get some money into our medical fund.
Okay. We'll move on to Ordinance 11016.
Is there a question?
I just wonder, I just wonder why we're refunding money to the state?
Am I reading that wrong? I would imagine it's an unused portion of a grant?
Yes.
That's confirmed by Deputy Auditor Kreider.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance 11016 is an ordinance providing for the issuance of $473,411 of notes by the City of Athens, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of renewing notes previously issued, for the purpose of paying part of the costs of acquiring a new pumper truck and related equipment, and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. You've read everything I have in front of me about the need for this appropriation. So did the administration care to speak to it? Or the deputy auditor?
Now, this is for the city pumper truck, which is the newer, the two fire trucks, and this will be our second payment. It's a payment to Hockin Valley Bank, who's been very generous with their interest rate, and it's just a rollover loan, so.
You said it's a rollover?
It's a rollover, yeah. We do, we pay a part of the principal, and then we start a new loan. We'll be paying $50,000, and this is also part of the money that OU contributes to help pay for.
That sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to Ordinance of 11116, an ordinance providing for the issuance of, not to exceed, $7,300,000 of bonds by the City of Athens, Ohio, for the purpose of financing a new swimming pool facility by retiring notes previously issued for the purpose and providing additional funds for such facility and matters related to such bonds, and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. If you don't have a copy of the ordinance in your packet, it's also on our shared drive. It's eight pages long. Let me read just part of the introduction here. Whereas the council has heretofore by proper legislation declared the necessity of a... I'm sorry, looking at the wrong one. Erase all that. But it's essentially the same thing. Whereas the council, the City of Athens, Ohio, the municipality, has heretofore by proper legislation determined the necessity of constructing, equipping, and furnishing a new swimming pool facility, the project, and whereas this council desires to finance the costs of project through the issuance of general obligation bonds pursuant to Chapter 133 of the Ohio Revised Code. The Act upon the terms provided herein, and whereas the city auditor, as the physical officer of this municipality, has heretofore estimated that life of the improvements constituting the project is at least five years, and certified the maximum maturity of the bonds issued therefore is 30 years. Whereas this council by Ordinance Number 05414 passed July 14, 2014, authorized an increase of 0.1% in the municipal income tax imposed by the municipality for the purpose of paying costs associated with the project for a period of 20 years from January 1, 2016 through December 31, 2035, which was approved by the prerequisite majority vote of the electors of the municipality at the election held November 4, 2014. The municipality income tax and the proceeds of the municipal income tax are referred to herein as the municipal income tax proceeds, and whereas this council expects that principal interests on such bonds will be paid from the municipal tax income proceeds, and whereas the municipality issued notes in anticipation of such bonds in the amounts of $500,000 dated April 26, 2016, now heretofore be ordained by the Council of Athens, Ohio. Section 1, 2, go on for the rest of the ordinance. What this is in a nutshell, it's not an appropriation. What we are doing here is this council is granting the authority to have a lending institution create the bonds, and then for companies then to sell those bonds so that we can raise the necessary capital to pay for the swimming pool. As you know, our income tax of 0.1% will only generate approximately $600,000 to $700,000 per year over a total of 20 years, which comes out to about $13 million or so. In order to provide money to actually begin construction, we have to go out to a lending institution and borrow a set amounts, in this case, $7,300,000, to let contracts and begin construction. So that's why we're doing this tonight. Did I leave anything out?
I need a clarification.
Clarification, Madam Pappy.
You said 13 million over 20 years? That's the first I've heard that number.
Okay, I just made...
I thought we were up at 16 million or 17 million.
It's closer to 17 million.
17 million. I misspoke.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Give or take.
And is it, what, pretty accurate in a 600 to 700,000 per year?
Yeah, it's been fairly accurate. As of to this week or so, we've collected around $392,000 this year.
Okay. That's been read for the first time. Ordinance 11216 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into an LPA state agreement for a pavement replacement project on US 33, State Route I-50 and State Route 13, and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Okay, this should, thank you, President Nisley, this should be fresh in our minds. We just discussed it a little while ago, and pretty much it's an ODOT, providing 100% of the costs and dealing with the right-of-way issues, and ultimately, this will be an upgrade for Athens residents.
Okay, thank you. Ordinance 11316 is an ordinance closing a portion of Armitage Road on Saturday, October 1, 2016, for a cross-course bicycle race and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you. Again, this should be fresh in our memories, and I'm glad that the local organizers did attend tonight. I think that was important, since it's somewhat of a new event for us, but it sounds like they would like to have it ongoing on a regular basis. Do we need to suspend this?
Second.
Okay, second reading.
Second reading.
Yeah.
Due to its date, the date...
Right. October 1st.
Okay.
It needs to be in effect for 30 days.
I think you have a question?
Oh, question, sorry.
I have one question, I realize I should answer, or ask during the committee meeting, but it just dawned on me. Other than the promoters of the event, are there going to be other vendors present? This thing?
Good question.
If so, how do we regulate that?
If it's not on the city property, you wouldn't. And if it's on private property, and usually the Health Department checks those, but we can find out. We have another reading, so.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to Ordinance 11416, an ordinance banning parking and closing that portion of Court Street from Mulberry to Carpenter on October 29th and October 30th, 2016, in anticipation of a large number of people converging on downtown Athens on Halloween weekend, introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you, Member Nisley, and we always come around to Halloween somehow. First reading, it's pretty self-explanatory. One of the changes, if you all recall from our discussion earlier, is that the music will be stopping at an earlier time, an hour earlier this year, but that... And there's no free parking, none of that, so this is pretty much the closure of the street.
Okay. Questions? Councilmember Cochran?
Thank you. I would just clarify that it's only a half an hour earlier closure, I believe.
Thank you for clarifying.
Or not closure, but...
The music ending banned performance.
Thank you. Ordinance 11516 is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Section 13.04.10, unnecessary noise for scheduled bandstand performances hosted by the Clean and Safe Halloween Committee on October 29th and 30th, 2016, Halloween weekend, introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you. This is the follow-up ordinance that goes along with Halloween weekend, suspending our noise ordinance.
Ordinance 11616 is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Chapter 11.04, vending, peddling, and soliciting, to allow vending in a designated area on October 29th and 30th, 2016, Halloween weekend, introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you. Again, this is for our vendors who are on city property and vending, so they need to provide a, they need to get their license, and that's what this ordinance is about. So this is the other sister ordinance.
And what is the last time and date that they can get a vending license for this particular event?
I believe it's 30 days prior. I will check on that.
They should probably be thinking about it, right?
It should be.
They need to register for spaces seven days in advance, and prove trailer, self-sufficient for power.
And who do they apply to for their vending?
The code office.
Right. Thank you. Thanks for clarifying. Ordinance 11716 is an ordinance closing a portion of Court Street on Monday, October 31, 2016, from 5:00 PM to 7:30 PM for trick-or-treat hosted by the Athens Uptown Business Association, introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you, President Nisley. So just as a point of clarification for the public, this is Monday, October 31, so this is the Monday after the Halloween on the downtown street where we closed Court Street. So, and it is from 6:00 to 7:30. And parking will be banned from 3:00 to 7:30 for this activity.
It says 5:00 to 7:30.
Okay. The title's...
It's 6:00.
Okay. 6:00 to 7:30.
Then the agenda needs to be fixed.
All right. And as far as I know, considering last year's issues, this seems to be, there doesn't seem to be many conflicts or issues related to this, because again, it's prior to the selling, it's after the selling is what I'm trying to say, of costumes and whatnot. So we haven't heard from any merchants that I know of.
Should be minimal impact.
We'll move on then to announcements and other business. And I do believe we probably have a need for all committee meetings to meet, all committees to meet next week, as far as I understand. And then our other item is that we have an appointment to the Civil Service Commission, and I believe Mayor Patterson has that information for us.
I do. I have contacted Andrew Malika, Esquire, and he has agreed to serve on the Civil Service Commission, which is a three-member commission. So he would be the third, as there was one resignation from the commission. And I appreciate his willingness to serve.
Can you describe what the commission is for people?
Sure, as best I can. The Civil Service Commission essentially will vet all of the civil service positions within the city. I don't know if they have any oversight over the actual, any testing or anything at that level, but certainly the civil service positions. Thank you.
In our recent experiences, yes, they actually do, proof of tests, approve of the actual scores once they're conducted, and, you know, we have a military preference and all that. And we would be thanking current Commissioner Roxanne Groff, who is leaving after a number of years of service, so.
25 years, as I understand it. A rather long period. That may be in excess, but it was a long period of time that Roxanne Groff served on that particular commission. There are no term limits on that particular commission either.
Is that posted on our website, who's on that commission?
Most recently posted their new rules, or how they refer to those, and those are open to public comment, I believe, still.
All right, so we have a recommendation from city administration for the appointment of Mr. Andrew Malika to the Civil Service Commission. I move that we appoint him to said commission?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of this appointment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Okay, so that motion is approved, and we welcome Mr. Malika, and also, as you said, thank Roxanne Groff for her years of service, too. At this point, we have an opportunity for citizens to speak. Oh, yes.
I don't know exactly when I should do this, but I did want to share that today we received two letters from the Ohio Water Development Authority congratulating us for paying off two loans. So I wanted to give a thumbs up to everyone, and these were loans, 20-year loans with OWDA. One was for an excess of $720,000, the other $179,000. They were incurred back in 1997 for the West Side Sewer Improvements. So all paid off. Congratulations.
Great news. Thank you very much for sharing that. All right. Now we'll move on to opportunities for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services not covered on the agenda. Is there anybody in the audience who wanted to speak on anything? You have three minutes if you'd like to do so, and it needs to be on an item not on the agenda previously. Next, we'll be moving into executive session. I'll offer just a few minutes of explanation. We will take a roll call vote to move into that executive session. Before we do that, I know we have some members from the press here tonight who may want to ask council members or staff some questions, so we'll give you, let's say, seven minutes to... to ask any questions that you might want to, and then we will close the doors to go into executive session. After we're finished with that, we do open the doors again and then make a motion for adjournment, so if anybody needed to stay and ask additional questions or have some further discussion. So right now, I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session for collective bargaining and pending litigation. I move that we move into executive session for what she said, with all members of council, president of council, law director, mayor, and service safety director, and we need the auditor. Deputy auditor.
Could you restate the two reasons?
The two reasons?
The audience heard those.
Collective bargaining and pending litigation.
Two matters.
Right. And so the deputy auditor also. Okay. So we have a motion, and do we have a second? Did I?
Second.
Second, okay. To enter into executive session, and I'll go down the roll, and Councilmember Butler?
Aye.
Councilmember Reisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Pappy?
Aye.
Councilmember Fall?
Aye.
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Kotsas?
Aye.
And Councilmember McGee?
Aye.
Okay. All right, so we will, it's 8:11, so why do we say 8:20? We'll move into executive session, so if press has any questions they want to ask, you've got some free time here to ask.